All right, we are ready to get started. Today is Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. This is the council's work session, and I am calling it to order and giving notice to the public that at this meeting, the city council may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for legal advice on any item that is listed on the following agenda. Can we have roll call?
Mayor Daggett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet?
Here.
Councilmember Aslan?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Spence?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Councilmember Spence, do you have our land acknowledgement in front of you? Would you read it?
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you. Next up is open call to the public, which enables the public to address the council about any item that is not listed on our agenda tonight. And because items are not listed on our agenda, we cannot respond to anything that is said or ask any questions, answer any questions. You are limited to three minutes, and there is a clock down here where you can keep time. And DJ.
Miranda Sweet, Councilmember. Austin Aslan, Councilmember. Lloyd Matthews, Councilmember. Kara House, Councilmember. Anthony Garcia, Councilmember. David Spence. I just, I want, I want to begin in remembrance of the Declaration of Independence. To me, this, this prayer for relief is what this place is all about. An argument against cruel and unusual punishment by a hand guided by an evil mind, okay? That is to say, relief from further injury of a tyrannical hypocrite. What do I mean by evil mind? Well, citing, citing case law in Rawlings versus Apodaca, evil mind is found where the defendant intended to injure the plaintiff. Evil mind may also be found where, although not intending, intending to cause injury, defendant consciously pursued a course of conduct, knowing that it created substantial risk of harm to others. What do I mean by cruel and unusual? This refers to punishment that is considered excessively harsh, degrading, or disproportionate to the crime committed, violating the standards of decency in a civilized society, typically prohibited by the Eighth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. It can include torture in human prison conditions and sentences that are grossly disproportionate to the offense. What do I mean by torture? APT, the Association for Prevention of Torture, lists four elements in the definition of torture: the intention, intentional infliction of severe mental or physical suffering by a public official who is directly or indirectly involved for a specific purpose. What do we mean by cruelty? Cruelty is the intentional infliction of suffering or the inaction towards another suffering when a clear remedy is readily available. For instance, a remedy such as transitional housing opportunities specifically for a homeless individual affected by COVID-19. Wikipedia mentioned sadism when defining cruelty, and at my previous visit in these chambers, I mentioned being a victim of sadism and, and a torture victim. Sadism means the love of cruelty. It is a personality trait characterized by the enjoyment of inflicting or witnessing pain upon other people or animals. In its simplest form, a sadist is someone that derives pleasure from someone else's suffering, and in my case, torture. In late 2024, I DJ was the victim of discrimination of housing at FSSI while employed 40 hours a week at Walmart. I regularly complained of being tortured and, and discrimination. If you look, you will find that I complained to the Flagstaff Police Department, to their Mental Health Crisis Line, Terrors Health, to Judge Amy Cridle, and to Judge Elaine Friedland-Horn. These complaints alleging discrimination and torture were, were ignored. In closing, what does it mean to hear, to hear cries for help alleging torture and to be ignored? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the review of the draft agenda for the February 18th City Council meeting. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? All right, then we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. This report touches on a few things. First of all, thank you for the retreat of two weeks ago. It's very successful. We're back at it, of course, of course, on this week, Thursday and Friday. So appreciate your continued participation in that. We know we, we ask a lot of your time. The Managers' Excellence Awards were handed out last week. Thanks to my colleagues, Joanne and Shannon, for taking part in that. And we had many people involved, Chris Rody, others, Champions of Flagstaff. It was a great group effort and much appreciated. At some point in the near future, maybe in the next Managers' Report, we'll give counsel a summary of all the recipients of the awards and some highlights. So expect that to be forthcoming. Moving on, there's a couple of attachments to this report, including the pros update and a nice write-up, I believe by Sarah Langley, on the importance of grant funding for the city. I thought that was a very good read. Also in the report is a nice summary, including a lot of excerpts regarding the Fire Department and Summit Fire Medical Awards, Summit Fire and Medical Awards, pardon me. There's quite a few listed in that, and I want to thank the council people who did attend that, but for those who didn't attend, it's written up here for your, your reading enjoyment. I will single out the firefighter of the year for 2024, Levi Dalton, and it was a great narrative that accompanied his award, and he was there along with all of his colleagues and celebrating and all this great achievement. Moving on, something I wanted to take a few minutes of your time and have some discussion with here, and that is the state and federal funding requests. So Counsel, some time ago, you had a discussion of your legislative priorities for both state and federal, and that spanned a couple of meetings. This is a little bit different, but it's a little bit related as well. Each year, we have a consortium that travels to Washington, D.C., to meet with our congressional delegates and some federal agencies and so forth. But all year, we have a federal lobbyist in Washington who does a great service for this community and lobbies hard for us on policy matters and on funding requests. This, today, this topic is about funding requests, and it concerns federal and state funding requests. So we'll start with the states. There are four listed items: wildland fire management facility and design, public safety apparatus, Big Phil Lake flood mitigation project, and airport security and access control upgrades. You can see the estimated amounts, there are the asks that we're tending forward, and I'd want to open up this opportunity, Mayor, for you and counsel to have any discussion of this. It will not be the last time this is before you. It may be on the state request, frankly, but on the federal request, we will have an agenda for the Washington trip before this council, prior to that trip, and that trip is scheduled for the end of March, that, that'll be coming up soon. So before we talk about the federal funding asks, I would invite any questions or comments that you may have on the state request.
Counsel? We've identified agencies for each of these or for some of these?
I believe so, and sometimes it's more than one agency.
Looks like that's it.
Okay. Onto federal funding asks. This is a longer list. We have the La Plaza Vieja Phase Two Project, the wildfire risk reduction, home hardening, homeowner matching, it's a mouthful, real-time operations center and emergency management equipment, the fanning wash flood mitigations, Pine Dell main upsizing, airport terminal expansion and accessibility, and the removal of green waste and biosolids from the municipal waste stream through thermal composting. And again, you can see, see the attributed amounts there that are being requested.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember House?
Thank you, City Manager. Can you give a little bit more detail on the La Plaza Vieja Phase Two?
On which one, I'm sorry, Councilmember?
La Plaza Vieja, Phase Two.
Phase Two. I can ask my colleague Sarah Langley to give you a nice update on that. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Councilmember House. And I see we have Paul Moot, our engineering director, here as well. But just to take a quick stab, La Plaza Vieja Phase Two is actually a request that we submitted last year. We've been asked to resubmit it this year, but we're hopeful that it will actually be funded with this federal, or this fiscal year's funding. The reason being, we received another earmark request for Amtrak funding. We then got a grant for that. So we're trying to move that funding over to La Plaza Vieja for this current fiscal year. If that doesn't work, we're resubmitting it for this year. So just some background, but the La Plaza Vieja project itself will include things like traffic calming, safer pedestrian crossings, improved ramps, and then also improved storm drains. And Paul, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. She did a good overview of that. That's at the Malpae and Clay Avenue intersection. So it's right by the Montessori School, and they have a park there and Natural Grocers. So we get a lot of walking traffic there.
Thank you both.
So I don't see the building for the fire equipment at the airport. Did we receive funding for that?
I am not sure. I know it's still in our lobbying packet. I'm not sure if Stacy Breckman-Ags is online or Brian Gold.
Hi, Sarah. And hi, Mayor and Council. Stacy Breckman-Ags, Grants, Contracts, Emergency Management Director. And I think you're referring to the snow removal equipment building, and we are still working on that. We've received some entitlement money, some bill money that will be coming to us, but we're continuing to work through the guarantee maximum price and with the F8 to continue the funding for the discretionary. So we still need that on our lobbying, federal lobbying request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, and thank you for the follow-up. As I mentioned, this is not the last time you'll see this request, but it's very important that we get this in front of you and, and in front of the community, so that everybody has a good idea exactly what we're pursuing through our state and federal delegates. So much appreciated. I think that wraps up my report, unless there's any questions of me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I see that we are sharing the list real fast. We'll move on from that, but yeah, that's just an excerpt out of my report. Thank you.
And for the public, this document is attached to the agenda that is online on the city's website under this meeting date.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel.
All right, moving down to item number seven, micro mobility share preliminary discussion. Welcome and hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Jenny Neiman, Climate Action Section Director. Tonight, I'm thrilled to be joined by my colleagues, Chris Fair in our Transportation Engineering Team, as well as Kim Austin from Metro Plan. We're here for a very preliminary discussion of micro mobility share in Flagstaff. Two important things to remember before I, I start, and I'll return to these. First, e-bikes and scooters are already among us in Flagstaff. I'm sure you see them on a daily basis, if not weekly. And so this conversation is really focused on whether we allow micro mobility share companies to operate in Flagstaff. With that, tonight, we're here to really talk about restarting a conversation. We have been here before. Our most recent effort ended in 2020. We used a Request for Proposals process in deep partnership with NAU, and we went out to bid and we collected proposals for operating micro mobility share in Flagstaff. We went into contract with a company called Gotcha Mobility. Then 2020 happened, the world changed, micro mobility share absolutely changed in that time, and Gotcha Mobility ended up breaking our contract. Fast forward to today, and our code specifies that a micro mobility share company can come to Flagstaff, but they need a permit. And micro mobility share companies do want to come to Flagstaff, so that's why we're here today. So this conversation, if I can just help frame it, isn't necessarily about bringing companies to Flagstaff. It's about, do we allow one or more to operate in Flagstaff? And how might we do that? So tonight, we're going to start with the basics of micro mobility share. Kim with Metro Plan is going to walk us through that. We're going to talk about how does micro mobility work? How does it operate today in other cities and a lot of our peer communities? What's the state of the industry? And what are considerations for management? Then Chris and I will walk through, what does this look like for Flagstaff? What should we think about if we think about this for Flagstaff? And Counsel, we will seek your direction for if we should reopen this conversation. I want to be incredibly clear, we are not asking you to support e-bikes or scooters tonight. We're not asking you to move forward with procurement. All we are asking is for your support.
Yep, yep.
In reopening this conversation. With that, I'm happy to send it over to Kim.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Kim Austin, and I'm the Transportation Demand Management with Metro Plan. Metro Plan is the region's metropolitan planning organization to assist in the development of long-range planning in urbanized areas with populations greater than 50,000. Our mission statement is to facilitate improvements and programs for all transportation modes through collaborative priority setting and the strategic pursuit of funding. I'm here to present the Mountain Line feasibility study, an updated version of that that was created in 2017, and I've included current data, the state of the industry, and now it includes micro mobility, not just bike share. A micro mobility program will have impacts to all jurisdictions and use NAU roads, city roads, county roads, and ADOT roads. As Jenny said, they're already here, so this is a perfect time to have this meaningful conversation on micro mobility share programs. But let's get to the basics of micro mobility. I'm referring to modes of transportation that are light, low occupancy vehicles, such as electric scooters, electric skateboards, bicycles, electric pedal-assisted bicycles or e-bikes, segways, I don't know, one-wheels, all those types of devices that are out there. So, but for this conversation, I'm going to be referring to e-scooters and e-bikes as micro mobility. That's an image on NAU campus showing the different modes, and if you've ever been on campus recently, there's a lot of e-scooters too, so. So these, a program, are shared devices. They're compact, they're often electrically powered, but not always. They're means of short-term, short-distance transportation. They provide efficient alternatives to traditional forms of transportation, and they will be operated and parked in the right-of-way and public spaces. And here are some examples of what they look like. Brief history on micro mobility in North America. 2008 is when it started with bike share generally, and in 2017, dockless programs came to the United States. I'll get to that, so don't worry. And we also saw the first scooter share in 2017 program. And now, fast forward to 2023, 2024, the, the companies and vendors have been streamlined, and now there's a few main companies, and we'll get into those further on in the presentation. Ridership is an all-time high, and it's still climbing. Okay, so we've dealt with the what, now the why. Micro mobility programs support a decrease in congestion and traffic and a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. NACDO, the National Association of City Transportation Officials, released a shared micro mobility report in 2023. It was reported in this study that micro mobility trips offset approximately 81 million pounds of carbon emissions by replacing automobile trips. In addition, oh, and to have context on what that means, because I was like, well, what's 81 million pounds? Anyway, sorry. E-bikes emit 40 grams of carbon per mile, e-scooters 200 grams, and vehicles are about double that, so that's a per-mile comparison, just for your context. In addition, the North American Bike Share and Scooter Share Association is an association who collaborates across all sectors and highlights the benefits of micro mobility. In 2024, they released a 2023 State of the Industry Report, and in that report, 37% of shared micro mobility trips replaced car trips. So there's a real potential to make a difference. According to Johns Hopkins School, Bloomberg School of Public Health, transportation is one of the most underappreciated but significant determinants of health and well-being. Micro mobility devices contribute to increased physical activity of the users because they spend less time sitting in cars and traffic. That show, that increases the health of the community, and you have happier and more joyful residents, and of course, it promotes active transportation. Shared mobility programs are also affordable. They provide transportation options for those who do not have or cannot afford personal vehicles. These programs reduce the need for traditional parking. If you see in the image, the number of devices that you can fit in one parking spot, it's a lot. The devices are also an environmentally fun way to explore town, and they promote shopping and exploring local businesses you might miss by driving into your vehicle. As far as tourism, there's an opportunity for partnerships with local businesses to offer discounts to users and an opportunity for increased generation, revenue generation for those local businesses. Micro mobility is supported by Metro Plan and some city planning documents, including, including the Carbon Neutrality Plan, the Regional Plan, and the Active Transportation Master Plan. And to be specific, Regional Plan 2030 mentions integrating a balanced multimodal transportation system, promoting strategies to increase alternative modes of transportation, and encouraging the expansion of energy-efficient modes of travel. In the Carbon Neutrality Plan, it mentions encouraging residents to use multimodal transportation options and to transform transportation policies and plans to decrease greenhouse emissions and reduce the dependence on driving, and actually mentions specifically, launch a new micro mobility share program. And then third, the ATMP mentions creating a complete transportation system, enhancing mobility choices and optimizing existing infrastructure, enhancing mobility choices and safety. So it's embedded in many city documents already. All right. Transit. These programs really support transit, specifically the first mile to and from transit stops. This map that you see on the screen is a map that was produced by Mountain Line, and those, what are it, brownish rust color spots, they're areas with increased service requests to Mountain Line. Unfortunately, the road network is not conducive to increased transit, but these are areas where micro mobility program, share program, could really support transit. So I just wanted to highlight that. So, including in the feasibility study, we conducted peer city research, and we will provide a few highlights on that research today, but it's more in-depth than the study. Before I really talk about that, I wanted to mention, in our study, every program has a different model for shared micro mobility. When they were around in 2010, it used to be that the city was the owner of the devices and the programs, they were run through the city. Now, however, everything's changed, and all the, all this peer city research we had, all the programs were run by a third-party vendor. There are a few commonalities, being some of the cities receive financial benefits, and e-scooters are the primary devices offered with those programs. So those are kind of the commonalities. All right. This map shows all of the cities in North America with micro mobility share programs. This map was produced by the U.S. Department of Transportation, and I will highlight that 371 cities are in the United States. There are some Canadian and Mexican cities as well, specifically in Arizona, Yuma, Scottsdale, Phoenix, Tucson, Tempe, Mesa, and Gilbert, all have micro mobility share programs in existence currently. And that's just a list of the peer cities and their populations. We did the research. All right. So those peer cities, we looked at the average number of active scooters available within their programs, and the cities with population similar to Flagstaff had approximately 2 to 250 active scooters in use. So it's not like there's going to be thousands of devices all around town. And then on the right of the slide is another image from the U.S. Department of Transportation, just showing the growth in these programs. And I will highlight that in 2024, 75% of the devices were e-scooters versus only 25% e-bikes. Okay, to continue discussing vendors and program models. Nine of the micro mobility programs were established through an RFP process following, with a contract with some kind of vendor. Three of the programs we spoke with underwent, underwent a permitting process to establish their programs, which allows- to establish their programs, which allows different companies to come into their cities. And then, like I said earlier, there are six, about six vendors currently. The main ones are Bird, Lime, and Spin. Those are the main micro mobility share vendors. All right. This slide shows city investment and how it differs between programs. We don't have all the research on this one, but half of the cities we spoke with are rep, they have a program where they're repaid fees built into the contract with the operating company. As far as staff time, every program has a different model. So, for instance, Fort Collins had, entered into an RFP process with Spin. And they have one staff member dedicated to this program, and they, twenty-five percent of their time is dedicated to the program. Santa Monica, however, they allow different, several different micro mobility vendors to come to their town with a permitting process. They have one staff member who dedicates half of their time to the program, and then one code enforcement staff that gives a small portion of their time to the program. So just showing, they're all different, so. And we did have a micro mobility share, but it was really a bike share in Flagstaff in two thousand eighteen. The image that you have is a snapshot of the program, but it was a six-month pilot with the company Spin. And just to highlight of that, just under three thousand total trips were taken. Most of those were by students between the hours of seven P.M. and three A.M. The average trip distance was less than one mile. Now to discuss options for the management of a micro mobility, micro mobility shared program. The benefits have been mentioned, but now we need to discuss strategies, how to manage the risks. And the following slides, we highlighted some high-impact risks or risk, and some strategies, how to mitigate those risks. First is personal injury. Personal injury, it's very important to consider. This risk would be both to the human, who may have crashed, and the jurisdiction in which the crash occurred. So some options to mitigate this risk would be to have the users sign liability waivers and having a contract liability embedded with a contractor and agreement with a third-party operator. So those would be some options for that. Parking. Parking is definitely an issue, especially to prevent the devices from blocking sidewalks or ADA access. But also where they're going to be parked. Some options could be a parking incentive program. Maybe something like Park Smart Ride More. I don't know. I was coming up with funny, catchy names, sorry. Maybe it's a reward system for proper parking, tiered reward system with ride credits or monthly bonuses. Maybe like a parking leaderboard or a positive spin on it. Also, there's a technology called geofencing. And geofencing is a digital tool using GPS technology, and it allows remote device control. It's really useful, especially in preventing illegal parking. In some instances, the device does not turn off unless you're in the right spot. So you have to keep paying. So that's a very good incentive to park in the right place. It also can help with restricting riding in illegal places or controlling your speed limit, especially in pedestrian areas. And you can also get some great data from this, from this technology. Staff time. As I discussed earlier, all the programs are different, have different amount of staff involved. But generally, some staff time is included in all of the models. Some options for this strategy might be to embed administrative fees into each ride, which could pay for us, a staff, a support a staff person, or increasing the vendor responsibility for management of the program. Public perception. Changing public perception requires a multifaceted approach, highlighting benefits while addressing the concerns. By proactively addressing those concerns, showing tangible benefits for the program, collaborating with local stakeholders, and consistently delivering a user-friendly experience, you can shift that public perception to a more positive note. Where will they be ridden? Rather than focus on penalizing for misuse of riding in areas where they shouldn't be, a consideration might be incentivizing for good behavior or, and providing rider education on how they're ridden, where they're, where they can be ridden, and so forth. So. We also wanted to include a little snapshot of what we deemed medium risk. So a couple of these might be devices taking over existing racks. A strategy for mitigating that risk might be requiring the vendor to supply additional bike racks or install additional bike racks. And of course, incentivizing proper parking is a good one. Addressing weak, weak points in our infrastructure might be education, where they can be ridden, maps that can be created and put on an app or in, on paper form, distributed around to local businesses and such. And then equity, we wanted to make sure we addressed equity. One of the benefits of micro mobility program is providing transportation options to those individuals who don't own a vehicle. I met with the staff at Coconino County Health and Human Services to discuss if such a program would be beneficial to their population. And they said it would definitely help and will also help support their transit and the free passes that they provide for the community. And it would really help if the devices were placed in areas of need, the hospital, the King Street Building, and maybe the jail. In addition, Stockton, California, has an equity program called the Sustainable Transportation Equity Program. And this program is for e-bikes. And the e-bikes are placed in underserved and low-income communities, and that increases transportation equity for the individuals living in that neighborhood. So, to conclude, Metro Plan and Mountain Line recommend that partners explore establishing micro mobility share program and guidelines using best practices and risk mitigation tools mentioned in this, mentioned in the, in the study. Thank you so much. I'd be happy to answer questions after, now, whenever, I don't know.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I like the idea, for sure. I see a lot of crazy drivers on those scooters. They seem to think that they're invisible and can go anywhere. And I've seen some really tough accidents. I like the approach of using a third-party and having them take the liability because, as you mentioned, and just in assumption, there might be a lot of usage from midnight to three in the morning when people might have had a little bit, you know, to drink, and then that adds to the boldness. I met a young man at the post office when I was campaigning that had one of those single-wheel scooters. And he was crazy, and I said, man, aren't you afraid to, to, to ride that? He was really good at it. And about two weeks later, it came with one of those big braces, and his arm, you know, didn't work. But my question really is about, you know, when I'm down in the valley and stuff, I see scooters and bikes kind of laid everywhere. And then I'm concerned how that would affect people with limited mobility, using wheelchairs and stuff. Have, we had a conversation with commission on inclusion and adaptive living to see their thoughts about that. Because as you said, unless we incentivize parking areas, and even if we do, not everybody's going to hear to that. I don't want to bring this on if we are going to make it less accessible to our community members that have mobility issues.
Thank you. That's a great question. And I believe Jenny has more to speak on that. But I will say that is part of next steps would be, if council wishes, to really engage with all of the commissions on the, on those issues. Definitely.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And like I said, in theory, I think it's just a great next step as we're expanding our connectivity with our, you know, transit and, and with Butler, how we're developing that to be more foot and bike-friendly. That is coming up. But that is a big concern of mine, is our people with mobility issues.
I know, I think there might be more questions. Should we finish to see if maybe Jenny answers some of those? Okay. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, are you comfortable with moving forward? We've got about ten slides left, and we're going to dig in a bit to Flagstaff. Thank you so much, Kim, and Metro Plan and Mountain Line for the feasibility, feasibility report. We really feel like it set a really good foundation for us to have a lot of these sort of discussions and talk about all these considerations of what does this look like on the ground. And we will be using that for future conversations if council directs us to move forward. So now we're going to dig in to what this means for Flagstaff, where we are today, where we might go. And as I said before, this conversation is less about devices and more about businesses and operators. If you want proof of that, I recommend heading to NAU, specifically over to the Pedway during maybe a weekend morning. I thought I knew about all the new kinds of mobility. And then I went there, and I saw, you know, a hundred scooters in two hours, I think. It was pretty amazing. And, and they were generally coexisting with our more traditional modes. So it was a good wake-up call for me about how common these devices actually already are in Flagstaff. And as I said before, NAU has been with us every step of the way. They continue to be. They're not here tonight, but they've been working with us for about six months to, on this conversation, along with our other partners. So now to operators. This is a little bit of repeat, but I just want to make clear. The city of Flagstaff code today states that you need a permit to come operate in Flagstaff. In two thousand nineteen, when we opened up that procurement process, that was essentially for that permit, to award the permit. It was a standard request for proposals, or RFP. And the result was not money exchanged, like it is for many of our contracts. It was just the awarding of that permit. That is how many of these different operations have gone in our peer cities as well. Since then, this conversation has laid dormant. There has been a lot of change in the industry, as Kim talked about. We've also just been trying to figure out where we have staff time to be able to reopen this conversation. At the same time, I know that many of you have received emails from micro mobility share operators. They also call me. And so that's one of the reasons why we're back here. We know folks want to come. And as Kim said, just to say, we know that micro mobility share can also help our community. That's one of the best things about it, is that the market shows us that people are seeing this as the best option for their trip, right? Because they're paying for these services. It is very clearly the best option for millions of trips around this country. And so that is kind of the beauty, is that we can look at all of this data and say, maybe that's the case in Flagstaff, too. Micro mobility provides people with more travel options. It can help our climate goals, and it can also decrease the cost of living in Flagstaff. Maybe you're using it because you don't have a lot of access to a vehicle. Maybe you share a vehicle. Maybe you just want to save money on parking. And so this begins us, brings us to the conversation today. We'd like to begin this conversation about opening up essentially a procurement process. To help council visualize what this looks like, we put together sort of a straw man, to be honest. It's just one potential scenario for how micro mobility can work in Flagstaff. It's very similar to the arrangement that we created with Gacha in two thousand twenty. Some folks ask, well, will the city run the bikes? Like, how are city staff going to take care of this? And, and that's not the way that we're doing it. It takes millions of dollars to start up one of these programs. And that's why most cities have fallen into a sort of arrangement like this, where really you just have a contract with this company, and the city's responsibility is monitoring and ensuring that bikes or scooters are being placed in the right place, right? That they're being parked places, that people's complaints are being resolved. That really becomes, the responsibility of the city is just managing and making sure that that contract is being complied with. And so this is just kind of one example where mostly the operator takes on all of this, and the city is really just trying to help complaints get resolved and things get addressed in the, in a timely manner. So council, as we propose the start to this conversation, this is where we are seeking your support. We want to start an engagement process with the community, with our partners, Mountain Line, Metro Plan, NAU, and many others, to be honest. We want to continue these conversations, continue research, continue talking to peer cities, but also start talking to our commissions, also talking to more community members, talking to businesses in town, et cetera. Finally, after that engagement, we want to prepare a recommendation to council on how to best move forward and return to council for direction. There is an alternative here, and we offer this alternative up for council just to say, what, what if we did not go forward with this? We can simply change the code, and we can change the code to say, actually, we don't want these operators to exist in council, or in Flagstaff. Council can make that decision later when we come back to you after talking to the commissions. That's obviously still on the table. So we'll just continue to hold this alternative, just so council can kind of see all the options available. In terms of what this process looks like, again, we're going to do engagement. We're going to talk to our community partners. We're going to build a recommendation for action that will likely build a recommendation for procurement, because that is the action, or essentially building a permit process. And then we'll return to council with the results of what we have heard from our community, as well as how we might move forward. After we get there, it truly operates like a regular procurement process. We'd have a request for proposals or a similar vehicle. We do vendor selection, and then we would work with that selected vendor to make sure that it will be successful with the city. And then finally, we'd support that vendor in program launch. I'm going to hand it over to Chris now to talk about some of the specifics of this process.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Chris Fair, and I'm a transportation planner with the city. I'm here to represent the Engineering Division on this topic. So we'll start with some key considerations. City staff want to recognize some considerations related to this work. Based on current market trends, we recommend the city does not specify a device type in any future procurement and remains open to both compliant scooters and e-bikes. Additionally, we want to recognize that staff time will be required at a minimum to work with the vendor and ensure enforcement of a contract. Depending on the level of oversight this contract may require, this effort may prompt a new staff request from the Engineering Division. We'll talk about engagement. Next steps in this process will include thorough engagement with many city commissions, divisions, and regional partners. Please give this list a look over, and feel free to advise us on any additional groups if you feel there are some that we may not have captured in this list, and we can always return to it as well. All right, back to seeking direction. So to reiterate, with council's support, we'll continue our efforts and explore ways to allow micro mobility share to return to Flagstaff. This includes engaging stakeholder groups, continued, continuous deep collaboration with our partners, preparing for a procurement or permit process for third-party operators, determining our staffing, staffing needs, and ultimately returning to council to present our results and make recommendations on how to move forward. And as a reminder, an alternative path forward could be to change city code to prohibit micro mobility share companies from operating in Flagstaff. Moving on to discussion. If directed to move forward, the considerations mentioned today will be the focus of our upcoming community engagement discussions. The results of these discussions will be used to build a recommendation for council. And so beyond that, are there any considerations you would like us to explore? We're happy to now welcome questions or recommendations for considerations beyond what we've discussed today. Thank you.
Thank you all for the presentation. Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you Jenny, Kim, Chris, for the presentation and the information. I'm very interested in continuing and moving this forward, this sounds like a great option. One thing that I am cognizant of or thinking of was, as we were discussing some of the challenges that may exist, and particularly parking, I remember when this was in pilot in the community a while back, I was both living and working in multifamily, and there were a lot of challenges with bikes essentially either being just dumped, or linked to chains, or things like that around the community, and not really having clear direction on who to reach out to. The company itself would say that we had to contact the city, the city would direct us to the company, so it was just kind of a circle. So navigating some of that and keeping that sort of challenge in mind would be really important. I noted the conversation about placement and locations to support equity, and strongly support that. I would definitely recommend reaching out to not only the groups that you identified already, but considering things like the neighborhood associations, considering partnership with the schools, and so forth, to be able to support that mobility across those different types of groups as well, and ensuring that they're getting placed in great placement within those neighborhoods as well, that are part of the League of Neighborhoods and others. I think as this potentially circles back to us, I'd be interested in more of a deeper dive into the like-sized communities that you noted, particularly like Logan and I think it was Santa Monica were the closest in size to Flagstaff, just to better understand the benefits and the challenges that they faced, and so that we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, or the e-wheel, whichever have you. But yeah, just learning from how they set their programs up, and how we can bring this back to Flagstaff in a stronger and ongoing way.
Thank you, councilmember. We absolutely agree, there's a lot that can be learned from our peer cities, so great place to start.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very good presentation, I'm excited about this program, and I do also want to see it move forward. And I remember being at a council meeting where you guys were talking about the last micro-mobility program here in Flagstaff, and how many questions were, came from council on that one, so I hope not to be belabored in the process, but I do have quite a few just initial statements. So first off, I wanted to kind of tag team with Kara, or Councilmember House, as far as the equity component is concerned for our underserved communities. And I would also like to, on that line, I'd like to kind of put a bug in the ear for Mountain Line, to see if there's any programs that they can derive some of their discounted or free passes for those who can't afford it, and see how that can align with these sort of services to get people to their complete location, instead of leaving them walking. Think that would be important. I have, I also have concerns about the last program that was in the city, it was a bit of a mess in some respects, but we were in a different time then, we were also dealing with a different partner than I think we'll be dealing with now, and I think we've evolved a lot since then, but there's a great concern, especially when you talk about the demography and the timeframe, that that demography use these type of things, it leads to, you know, the obvious suspicion of driving them home at between the hours of 1:00 and 3:00 a.m. in the morning, for whatever reason it is, and the safety of those type of people, and the safety of those type of riders. Now, let's see here, I do support, let me see, sorry, just give me one second. I like the amount of detail that Santa Monica invested into their programming by dedicating 50% of a staff member, but I think that it's better, that's representative of how large their program is. I don't know how large Flagstaff's program needs to be, but I think I align a little bit more with Grand Junction in that they were giving 20 to 40 hours per month of staff's time, which gives staff the ability to do other things. And I'd like kind of like a hybrid of that, and see if it would work with using a little bit of staff's time, and also asking the vendor for some administration, so that way we don't have some of those earlier highlighted problems with the back and forth between the vendor and the city. And let me see here. Now, my suggestion is that we start with one company, and then see if that works good, and then move from there. And I have a few other questions, but I'm going to let other councilmembers speak to see if they can cover those. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember.
Councilmember Sweet, yeah, Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You know, I'm pretty excited about this. I have a business downtown and experienced the pilot that we did years ago, and it had some rough spots, definitely, but I think technology has come a long way. So I'm really glad to hear that, you know, the DBA and the downtown businesses and the business community in general is on your list of who to reach out to. And don't forget about the business owners, so, you know, I was there, a lot of us were in business during the pilot, and getting a perspective from those business owners might be valuable, because I can share a lot of what I saw. I definitely think education will be very important in this. I like the equity conversation, engaging in the commissions, engaging with Mountain Line and all of our plans, and making sure we're in line with that. In talking with Hunter with the DBA, you know, our initial thought going back and forth, and it was a brief conversation, was just on the geo-fencing and making sure that there are not bikes or scooters laying everywhere. Our downtown can't handle it, and I don't think our community would want that regardless of the location. So I'm speaking more of the downtown area, and I know this will be citywide, but those are just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Aslan, and then Councilmember Spence.
Thank you all for this presentation, thank you to Metro Plan for putting so much work into this, and thank you Jenny and your team for getting this off the ground again. I say full steam ahead, or full solar ahead, if you will. This checks all the boxes for me, it gives me all the feels. I think it just, it's an embracement of our sensibility around multimodal transportation, reducing vehicle miles traveled, density, and, you know, getting rid of parking minimums, these things are all kind of synergistic, or this strategy is kind of synergistic with a lot of those objectives or aspirations that we have. You know, I know there was a lot of heartburn during the pilot projects, but as others have said, you know, I just want to point out, that was almost a decade and pandemic ago. I dare say, I think the Flagstaff community, as well as this new council, probably has their comfort level and familiarity with micro-mobility at a much higher level. You know, I do wonder about the flow of these things from onto campus and all around town, I know those conversations are ongoing. As Vice Mayor said, I like the idea of needing them to be parked in certain spots, at least in some areas like downtown, et cetera. I'm not sure how that works, it sounds kind of clunky. I'd hate to get charged $500 because I walked away from one of these things and didn't know I was supposed to park it somewhere else, but I'm eager to see how the businesses, or how the companies make that work. And I would definitely get Hunter in on this, I'm sure there's already been some conversations there, it sounds like there has been, but just to reiterate, he has a vision for a much sleeker downtown, and I bet he has some experience with how to incorporate micro-mobility into a vision like this, or at least he can make some phone calls and find out from some peers, do some horizontal learning and cross-pollination on some best practices and ways to alleviate some of those challenges and community concerns. Let's go.
Councilmember Spence.
Like, like other councilmembers, I urge staff to scoot into this and to pedal as fast as you can. I do have two questions. Is NAU using a vendor, or does NAU own their micro-mobility devices?
Thank you, Dr. Spence, for the question. I can speak to NAU a little bit, so NAU does not provide micro-mobility devices as part of a share program beyond their yellow bike program. Their yellow bike program rents out bikes to students on a long-term basis, so I think like for a week or more, and it's been really successful, and yet they saw a ton of student use with the spin program, so from all of our conversations, they, you know, they agree there's room for both, essentially. The devices that are on NAU's campus right now are mainly privately owned. We have heard, fun fact, that the football team got scooters, as well as many other sports teams now at this point, so, but they are all privately owned and operated by those students.
Thank you, and my second question is, or maybe a comment, I like Councilmember Garcia, very much favor a single vendor. And my question is, can you get to a single vendor through either the permit or the RFP process?
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Spence, Councilmember Spence. We absolutely see the benefits of that single vendor. I believe that in the feasibility report, which is very long, and Metro Plan puts so much work into it, they talk about that, of kind of why you would want to have a single vendor. The procurement process allows us to go with a single vendor, that is why we designed the procurement process in that way in 2019. Actually, exactly why we did that, because we only wanted one vendor at a time. And so this is a question that we'll ask the commissions and the community as we go through this engagement process, and try to just get alignment around that and hear what that, what the community says. The conversation will ultimately rest with council about that, but yes, a permit process is what many, many cities do, and that allows multiple vendors, right? Because anyone can get a permit, essentially. The procurement process is the way that we would basically say, there is one permit that we will be offering, and we will have a competitive procurement process in order to issue it. And I did receive this, this is NAU sort of, they have designed their, you know, all of their messaging around all of these different kind of devices, so we can pass this up to the dais.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I just had two more questions that are pretty brief, and then a little bit of a statement. So, at the next meeting, what I'd like to see for our next discussion would be to learn how micro-mobility positively contributes to sustainable and eco-tourism, so maybe a member of Trace's team could be here to speak to that on a tourism component. And then, of course, one thing that we haven't really mentioned much is safety, 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 and I know that you guys are deep in the trenches on the safety component to this, but just to share a little bit of an anecdote, when I was, you know, come off of Santa Fe, turning on to Aspen to come to the city hall today, there was two probably college-age folks that were cruising on one scooter, and, which made me think, oh, great, if we had this program, then they could, one could ride theirs, and the other one could rent one, they could ride together, which would be great. But as they hit that little funky part in the street where it turns into cobblestone or whatever, they kind of had a little kerfuffle there, and they weren't wearing helmets. So that's, that's a safety component to this is the biggest drawback that I've seen to the program, and I am very, not very concerned, but like I said, that's the one thing I have never seen, is somebody riding a share vehicle with a helmet on, typically because I'm just assuming that maybe some of them are just tourists and things of that nature. I imagine the locals definitely have their helmets, but that's who I'm concerned about, is our tourist population. So that's just something to be said. And lastly, this is kind of silly, but I came up with it in the moment, because we were talking about naming the parking thing, so I just kind of expanded on that and put, just park your ride, jump on a scoot-scoot and glide.
I love it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Any additional questions, comments? Great job, very thorough, and appreciate that this conversation's back before us again.
Thank you so much, council. Thank you, Kim and Chris, and to all our partners, appreciate it.
All right, we're moving down to item number eight, pressure wastewater code amendment.
All right, good afternoon, Council and Mayor Daggett. My name is Jackson Sazhar, and I'm a project manager with Water Services, and this afternoon I'm going to be presenting on a code amendment, a proposed code amendment for allowing for the public ownership of pressurized wastewater systems. With me today is Brian Hamrick with NCS Engineers, he's a subject matter expert on this topic, and he'll be providing an overview of what pressurized wastewater systems are, and some research that NCS Engineers completed for the city. With that, I'll have him kick it off with the next few slides that are the overview.
All right, thank you, Jackson. This is a diagram of how these systems might be incorporated for these kind of low-lying areas in the city that don't currently, you know, can't be sent by gravity from those areas to the existing collection system. On the left-hand side is kind of the first part of what this would look like, and it's essentially how you provide wastewater surface today. You'll have the private residence where the home is on the left, you'll have a private sewer lateral that will flow by gravity from that residence to a sewer main that's in the street. That lateral would still be owned, you know, by the homeowner, but then the sewer main that's in the street is a collection line that would be public, so it'd be in the right of way, and owned and operated by the city. Those sewer mains would then flow by gravity to a centralized pump station, which is shown in the figure on the right, to where you'll have some below-grade pumps and some equipment that's above ground that essentially takes that flow, and then pumps it uphill to where it can tie back into the collection system for the city. Kind of an aerial overview of what this may look like, this is an area within the city. In the bottom right is the area in question, and you'll basically have some gravity wastewater mains or sewer mains, you know, you could have one of those, you could have multiples of those going throughout the area, and those would collect all the wastewater to, and send it by gravity to this lift station, and then that lift station would take it and pump it uphill, you know, through a force main, you know, that could be 100 feet long, it could be a mile long, it depends on, you know, the application to discharge it into the city's system. Then from there, it flows by gravity to the wastewater plant. The city did hire us to do some research into this, and how it's handled throughout the state, so this is very common practice for multiple municipalities in Arizona. You'll find these in most cities. And so four that we reached out to that were similar to Flagstaff in size, was Prescott, Sholo, Lake Havasu, and also Payson. But in addition to that, we did go out, you know, took some of the staff from the city, went out to the city of Prescott, they have over 60-plus, you know, lift stations that are similar to what's being considered here, met with their wastewater superintendent, and toured some of their sites to see, you know, kind of some of the standard practices that they employ. With that, turn it back over to Jackson.
Before we get into the history of the pressurized wastewater systems in Flagstaff, I'd I just wanted to mention some public outreach that we did. We did send this out to our community engineering standards notification group that's consisted of local engineers and developers, and took feedback from them via an online form. And we also presented to Water Commission and got feedback there. So, historically in Flagstaff, public pressured wastewater systems have been prohibited. Projects that required pressured wastewater were handled on a case-by-case basis. And the city currently owns one large lift station at the Rio de Flac wastewater plant, and one low-pressure system on the east side of town. There's other existing private wastewater systems, or I should say, pressurized wastewater systems within Flagstaff. One that comes to mind is on Caden Court in the industrial area on the east side. So, the proposed code amendment would allow for pressurized wastewater systems outside of the gravity water shed for the treatment plants. It will, the setup will be a gravity system to a regional lift station, and then back to ground, back to gravity as soon as you cross over the watershed boundary. And that, this code amendment will set minimum standards for specifications and standards for lift stations and force mains. So, a big part of this, this code amendment is to make sure that we're not going to have pressurized wastewater systems going everywhere in Flagstaff, because they are more costly to maintain and more difficult operationally to maintain for staff. So, this diagram is a map of the, the city with an overlay of the watershed of the Rio, of the, sorry, the Wildcat Hill Treatment Plant. As you can see, it covers a large majority of the city, and especially the majority of the private land within the city. So, this, this code amendment really will only affect the areas outside of that hashed-out Notably, there's been recent developments in the Lake Mary area that have brought this to the forefront. But this, this policy is going to be set up to handle all future developments that are outside of this boundary. In conclusion, this code amendment will allow for pressurized wastewater systems within the city limits for places that can't be served by gravity. New lift stations and force mains will be required to build, be built to a high standard that is set by the city, and it won't allow for developers to put in, you know, the cheapest possible lift stations, and then poorly maintain them until, you know, they may fail, and the city could be forced to take over ownership of them. And then, it also allows for the choice between public and private to give flexibility for different cases that may arise. We've also considered costs in this. We feel that this is similar to different pressure zones in the water system for areas that are at higher elevation. In the water system, we have booster stations that pump it up to those higher elevation areas, and those customers don't pay any additional cost for those booster stations. It also, like I was mentioning, minimizes the risk of a forced takeover of a failing lift station. When we met with the city of Prescott, they have, if I recall correctly, 67 lift stations. And when I asked the wastewater superintendent there, not a single one of those lift stations was taken over publicly initially. So, they've had a lot of problems where they have to, they're forced to take it over, and then they have to rebuild partially, or, you know, or even fully to allow their staff to properly operate and maintain those lift stations. I've also, we got a comment in Water Commission on cost and a recommendation to add a 10-year operation and maintenance cost upfront that would be paid by the developers. I've included that in this code, and that will be, you know, expected by any development that comes in. And we feel that this, this code is necessary, this code change is necessary to continue to provide high-quality and equitable service throughout the city. For next steps, we would, you know, if this all goes well today, we would take this to council next week for the first read, and then the, the second read would be on March 4th. With that, I'll open it up to any discussion and questions.
Thank you, and great job. Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Jackson, can you go back to the map with the, grade over it?
Yep.
Can you, I'm a visual, so can you tell me, I'm looking down south of the 17, that line, like where is JW Powell in there?
So, this, this is JW Powell, this little white line here, coming through, this would be Pine Canyon, and then continuing, that's the state land and kind of Juniper Point that recent developments.
And the recent development that came to council, where is that located?
That's, that's over here on Lake Mary Road, just outside that boundary. There's two developments there, Lake Mary Housing and Ascent Lofts, and we, we would plan to build one regional lift station over there.
And the city boundaries or limits, is that the, kind of the jagged line all the way around?
Yeah, it's just kind of hard to see, but it's yellow and black line.
Okay, yeah, that really helps me get official. So, you mentioned that the risk of a developer putting in a lift station, and then maybe, you know, maybe it's not good quality, and then if we take it over. Couldn't we just require a certain level or quality, I don't know how they come, but for them to put in to ensure that it's of good quality and that it has a higher probability of being reliable? Someone's standing up in the background.
I think you, it's an approach, but I, I feel like, number one, you're allowing for a private utility company within the city. This causes some challenges with, like, any need to expand that facility, and they, they would likely be able to charge a fee to, to the customers on it, on top of what they're already going to be paying for water and sewer.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused. If, on, on outside of this grade, a developer, we would still require them, even if it's going to be a public maintained, to put the lift station in, correct?
Correct, they would be.
But then, we take ownership of it?
Yes.
So, at that point, couldn't we say, we're going to take ownership, and you have to have at least this grade of quality? I don't know how they're ranked or anything, but.
So, to keep it private?
No, to, for it to go public, but if they're going to be the ones installing it and paying for it, can't we require a certain level of quality? I see a head shaking.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think the big difference here is, if it's private, it would not have to fall within our standards, that maybe at an elevated standard. If it's public, it has to meet our public standards.
So, maybe I missed that, then, will there be some opportunities for developers to keep their lift stations private?
Yeah, I mean, I think the intention is to make them all public.
Right.
And as Jackson said, to talking to the city of Prescott, I think they started off with private lift stations, and maybe the option to be private. A lot of those became so dilapidated that they either had to completely remove them or replace them, and we just want to get ahead of that and away from that.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and thank you, Jackson, that was great.
City Manager.
Thank you, Jackson and Max. The other thing I would add to the topic you brought forward, Councilmember, is even with a quality lift station, privately installed lift station, there is no guarantee that it will be maintained. And lift stations are all about moving parts. We're talking pumps and systems that are in constant motion, and absent good and regular maintenance, they are prone to failure. And that is, in my opinion, one of the big distinctions between a privatized system and one that's publicly operated, is we have a lot more ability and resources, and frankly, expertise when it comes to maintenance of facilities like this. I've always looked at this issue as one of own it now or own it later, but under the own it later category comes at a considerable cost.
So, that makes sense. And if I remember correctly, in our discussion with the development off Lake Mary Road, the challenge was currently, it is in our policy or codes for the city not to own those, but if we change the code, then we could, it makes sense that we maintain them and we own them, so that this code would take care of that, correct? Thank you.
That's correct, yeah.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor Daggett. And thank you, Councilmember Matthews, for that question as well. I was also a little bit confused on that issue, and now I'm pretty clear and really happy with the outcome of that, that answer, and all the time that everybody took to answer it as well. I know we're not always digging in the weeds up here too much, but today, I, I'm a little curious, because I didn't do a whole heck of a lot of research on how these pumps worked, which surprises me, I must have missed that. But, yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of assuming here that the solid waste and whatnot through the gravity process is going to break down to basically where you're just pumping out water, and you can clarify that during the answer. And also, what kind of pump? Is it just pressurized pump? Is it a hydraulic? Does it run off of a spin wheel? If you want to speak to it just briefly, so I can better understand it, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
I'll let Brian take that one.
Yes, thank you. The pumps themselves are typically just have an impeller in the bottom, and they allow anything smaller than two inches to pass through them. So, like rags and whatnot generally won't go through them, but anything else will. Yeah, they're, they're mechanical, electrically powered.
Thank you. Next, Claire.
Council, oh, Councilmember Spence.
I've got a question about a safety issue. Is there any safety concern with regard to backflow prevention, protecting our freshwater supply, our drinking water, or potable water? Are these pressurized systems monitored in such a way that there's no, that we're sure there's no health hazard in terms of contaminating our freshwater?
Yes, there is a, there's kind of a complex SCADA system, which is like a control, I don't know what SCADA stands for, but it's basically a lot, like a number of sensors, and then an automatic call-out system. In case anything breaks, there's going to be an automatic call-out to one of our operators who will be trained to take care of whatever the issue is. Say one of the pumps goes down, there's going to be, you know, an additional pump there ready to go for maintenance. There would be a bypass that allows the system to continue working. These have been, you know, they're, they're in a lot of different places throughout the nation and the world, and, you know, it's a, it's a well-thought-out process at this point.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions or comments? And you're seeking direction from us as to whether we support moving forward with this?
Yes.
So, I am in support of this. I'm seeing thumbs up and nods, and so we'll have the first reading next week.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to item number nine, discussion and direction on existing city nuisance ordinances. And our existing ordinances are attached to the item on the agenda. And as I understand it, there's no presentation, it's just council discussing whether they would like to make any changes. And the relevant areas that we're looking at are highlighted in yellow. Thank you. So, council, any questions or comments? And I'm also, we have some public comment. Councilmember Spence.
As we get into this discussion, is it possible to consider, as I understand it, we have two ordinances that deal with noise, nuisance noise, party noise, various ways to describe each of these two ordinances. Is there any possibility of moving to one ordinance that covers all of nuisance excessive noise? And in so doing, might we have a more enforceable, a more understandable ordinance that would keep our community happy?
If I may respond to that, Mayor, Mayor and council, and thank you, Councilmember Spence, for the question. The reason there are two separate ones, because the nuisance noise ordinance was insufficient to take care of certain issues that unfortunately arose due to Flagstaff being a college town, if you will. And therefore, the nuisance party ordinance was put into place about 10 years ago. From a legal perspective, without going into details, it would be my recommendation that they remain separate. I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments before I take public comment? Okay, and we also have public commenters as well. So, I'll start with Jim McCarthy.
Thank you for having this discussion tonight. There are occasions when patio noise, patio bar noise is so loud that adults cannot sleep in their own homes. That is unacceptable. The noise has been so significant that some residents have moved away from the South Side. Businesses have had to close during evening hours because of noise. Offenders say that they were there first, as if that justifies infringing on other people's peace and quiet. Many of the nearby residents investigated the area before they bought their homes. They found that there was not a noise problem. The noise, the noisy bars came later. The area along South San Francisco Street is Zoned Community Commercial. The city code intent statement for this zone says that commercial activity should be compatible with residential uses. It states that residential is encouraged. Some say that these words are not binding. In good faith, people researched the zoning code before they moved to the area. They had no reason to believe that some words in the code should be ignored. In summary, the city has an obligation to prevent nuisance noise. We can address the issue by enforcing the existing nuisance party ordinance. Several years ago, our police cited a South Side bar for violating the nuisance party ordinance. Inappropriately, the judge ruled that the ordinance did not apply to commercial properties. That is the reason that the police have not used that ordinance for enforcement. However, the ruling was in clear conflict with the ordinance. In the ordinance definition for nuisance party, it states that it applies to, quote, "property used for," excuse me, "property used to conduct business," unquote. I will also note that when council approved the ordinance about 10 years ago, they included a statement saying that it applies to excessive noise. a statement saying that it applies to excessive noise. I believe that your city attorney will now confirm that the nuisance party ordinance does apply to bars, and they can be cited for violations when appropriate. So, my recommendation is that we enforce the provisions of the existing nuisance party ordinance. If that is effective, there will be no need to modify the existing law on this subject. One last thought. Stalling does not make the problem go away. And I say that because after working on this issue for six years, it seems like a lot of the things we did had the effect of stalling any progress we need to start enforcing. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Candace Ryan.
Mayor and council members, the last time I stood before you, an amendment to the nuisance noise ordinance was put in front of council. I think it's important for council to understand how we got to that point. When the nuisance parties ordinance was removed as an option, a decibel noise ordinance was proposed. I was asked to be a member of the group to help give input. It was clear most businesses did not want decibels, and the ones that did proposed ridiculous levels. Without any more options, we looked into amending the nuisance noise ordinance, which was ultimately rejected. Recently, we've been informed that the nuisance parties ordinance will be used in situations like ours, as it was clearly written to do so and had been used successfully in the past. With that information, we're hopeful the nuisance parties ordinance will be effective in dealing with the noise disturbances, and we're open to this working. However, we need a long-term solution. A long-term solution means requiring businesses to adhere to the zoning code as it is defined. Otherwise, there's no end in sight. This has been going on for six years, and even with an appropriate ordinance, with each new owner citations start over. In our situation, we had four owners over eight years. That's one every two, or, yeah, what is it? Forget the math. That's every two years, sorry. So I request that council work with zoning on this. I believe there's a way this can be done, so that businesses such as bars and taverns understand what is expected of them, so they're conducting themselves in accordance with the zoning code, which clearly prioritizes, prioritizes, sorry, residential dwellings. Otherwise, what is the point of zoning? In a town with a housing shortage, in an area that is zoned community commercial, and housing in a historic neighborhood, the city should be doing things to support the livability of the area. A badge at a bar conducting business in the way we're dealing with was to open up on 318 West Birch across from Wheeler Park, which is zoned CC, and has businesses in it now. Would it be tolerated? Would residents there be dealing with this for six years? No, they would not, as residents in that area had issues with annual festivals, and the cities, the city worked towards a solution, and it did not take six years. We are not talking about something once a year. We're talking about weekly, every week, every month, every year. Taverns and bars are not the issue, but the business model certain bars and taverns are operating under are. And the sheer proximity of certain patios to homes is problematic. I did not move to a commercially zoned area. I moved to community commercial in a historic neighborhood. Since the time I stood here, we've continued to be disrupted by noise. We held off on calling, trying to be reasonable, knowing this is currently being worked on, and it feels like being reasonable is not working. I just ask that you please, please, please do not treat the residents in a lower-income area as if they're disposable. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Councilmember Garcia.
Hello, Candace. Welcome. I'm curious about your input on, I know we had this, this discussion already took place prior to me being on council, and, and I'm pretty aware of, of the outcome of that. I'm looking here at The Times, and I did my own studies, and I, for me, I'm still kind of stuck on, on The Times being okay. But how do you feel about the 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM every day besides Saturday and Sunday?
Well, I mean, in effect, you don't have a noise ordinance with that. By the time Flag PD can come out, because they're handling, you know, calls with higher priority, understandably, we're not, it's not effective. But I believe the party, then, I know the noise, party nuisance, the nuisance party noise, sorry, geez, doesn't have time set. So we do feel hopeful in that ordinance.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Online commenters?
Thank you, Mayor. I have Blake Witten. Blake, you can go ahead and offer your comments now.
Hello, council. I own a single-family residence located at 12 East Benton Avenue. I was unable to rent my home during all of 2024 due to noise issues from the South Side Tavern, which is right across the alley from my home. I met most council members when I flew into Flagstaff from out of state to address council in person at the December 10, 2024 meeting, though I need to introduce myself to the newest council members, David Spence and Anthony Garcia. I have been continuing to show and advertise my home during 2025 and would like to provide an update. People love the home, they love the location, but when they stop by to listen to the bar noise and patio crowd at night, they turn the lease down. The effect is a whole of about $2,200 in my family's monthly budget. There was $2,000 in missed rent and about $200 in extra expenses since the home's utilities are in my name. This weekend, a prospective renter for my home named Charles Platt, who currently lives in Ashford, but who wants to live, who wants to move to Flagstaff, wrote to council to describe this frustration from a renter's point of view. Among other ideas, Charles suggested a curfew time for outdoor patios. But my request to the city and police department is, let's please try to solve the problem of nuisance noise by enforcing the existing party nuisance ordinance. My hope is to solve the problem and rent my home this spring. If party nuisance enforcement doesn't work, I am sure to return to council to seek other remedies for myself and for my South Side neighbors who are similarly affected by noise. Thank you, and I would love to answer questions from council.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Back when we were discussing this a few months ago, I saw your advertisement for your house to be rented. Are you still requiring quarterly payments for rent?
Councilmember, that's a detail that I usually negotiate with the renter.
Is it on the advertisement?
Yes, and I think the relevant fact for you to understand is that I have successfully rented my home every year for 35 years, from 1988 until 2024. So those are, there are a lot of details on the advertisement that I sometimes modify. It really depends on the renter.
Okay, I just had the question. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Thank you so much, Blake. Do we have another online commenter? No, Mayor, he was our only one. Wonderful. All right, council.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
The way it's posted tonight, it's merely to basically receive direction from council on whether they want to amend any sections of either the nuisance party or the nuisance noise ordinance. We wouldn't be getting into the nuts and bolts and details tonight, but from a more high level, identifying any sections that you're interested in having staff bring something back to you. I'm commenting on this because my office has been so heavily involved, but this is a joint effort between myself and city management, and I defer to the city manager if he has anything to add to what I've said.
Is that okay, Mayor? Thank you, city attorney, for your comments. We are looking for direction to see if there's any amendments to this, but I will share with council, we're also in a bit of a holding pattern. We have not been taking active enforcement under these nuisance, party nuisance policies. We recognize there was a court order that ruled contrary to the city, and we recognize that that may not be precedent establishing, leave that to the attorneys. But from an administrative standpoint, you know, when we last left the noise discussion at the dais a couple of months ago, it was indicated that at some point in the future, we would return with more policy suggestions, and we would advance the discussion in terms of a more comprehensive noise ordinance. In the meantime, we now are kind of scratching our heads as to what do we do with what's currently on the books. So, any, any insight or direction would be appreciated. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember House.
I will defer to Councilmember Spence. I saw his hand went up shortly, around the same time as I put my comment in, so please go ahead and then I'll, I'll go.
Thank you, Councilmember House. I, I just want to say, as a new council member coming into this discussion, I would be very much opposed to any elimination of commercial noise, noise coming from a commercial establishment such as a bar, from being included in our noise ordinances. I, I don't know if anybody's seriously proposing, as that judge seems to have decided that commercial noise is somehow exempt, but I would be opposed to that in any circumstances. And as I read the ordinance, you have to kind of look twice to find where a commercial establishment is included in the noise ordinance, but it's there, and I would be opposed to any efforts to remove a commercial noise coming from a commercial establishment from our enforcement of nuisance noise. Thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I very much agree with that, Councilmember Spence, and I believe at the time I did support continuing in conversation about this, and I continue to support that. I would like to continue looking at the hours. I believe that in the last discussion, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I may be misrepresenting or misremembering my recollection of that conversation, but it felt like we were close to reaching consensus on adjustments to those and just didn't quite get there. So, what always stays in my mind on this topic is just the, the nature of the neighborhoods that are most frequently impacted negatively by the sorts of policies and lack of the ability to enforce them. And I know from familiarity with the history of the South Side neighborhood and other neighborhoods like it, that those are often the ones that get overlooked in these sorts of conversations. And I always go back to that question that I believe Candace asked, I believe other council members in our last conversation asked, and I think I asked during that conversation, is what makes these neighborhoods different? And why should they be impacted any more negatively by something like this than, than any other neighborhood in our community? So I want to keep that argument alive and going, and want to see us continue to tackle this until we can reach some sort of solution that is to the benefit of that community in particular that's been impacted for the past several years, and all of Flagstaff as we continue to grapple with this as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. Just first, for clarification, on the party nuisance ordinance, are businesses included in that, or is that just residents?
Yes, they are. The language cited by former Councilmember McCarthy is spot on.
So, I, we did agree to bring this discussion back up at some point, and, and I'm in support of that. I, I'm still struggling on, on how we're really going to come up with a resolution. As Candace stated, there's no noise or hours that would be acceptable. And looking at the history of the South Side, San Francisco, those businesses were established for, I believe, some segregation issues back then, but they were vibrant community participants back there. It wasn't just residents, and I want to make sure we honor that. So, I don't know if it's going back to the decibel level measurement hours. Like I said, I don't, Candace stated it the last time we were talking about this as well, that, you know, no hours was going to be satisfactory because it's bothersome. So maybe the decibels are the way to go. I don't know. I don't know how we proceed. I don't know, maybe somebody else has a suggestion on what we can ask staff to bring forward, because staff did a lot of work the last time, and at the 11th hour, we thought, we decided that it just was too impossible to make a ruling. Yes, we did agree to bring it up again, but we also agreed that there was not going to be a happy medium, that we could, we really beat it to death. So I'm anxious to hear from other council members on what might be a possible direction to go, so we are making good use of our staff's time on something that we could, at some point, you know, get our arms around, because most of those businesses down there, a lot of them do have patio service outside. They have done some mitigation factors, and it just doesn't seem to be enough ever. So, I'll sit back and listen to other suggestions, but I have some concerns.
Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you all. Thank you for this discussion. This is coming back to us a little bit sooner than I was anticipating. Obviously, there's some loose ends we need to tie up here, and there's quality of life concerns that are never too soon to deal with. I suppose I'm willing to see this ordinance go into active status the way it is. I'd like to get a year of data behind it before determining it needs to be severely adjusted one way or the other. I will say, I do think it might be helpful to have hours of operation in which there is a certain amount of indemnification from a local business making normal amounts of noise. I might like to see that worked in there, if, if there's going to be any language change for you guys when you come back to us with this. I absolutely agree with Dr. Spence that we can't exempt businesses from this. While I subjectively question the nuisance status of the South Side Tavern specifically, it was always 100% clear to me that the mayor was acting in a bad faith with the community. And we definitely need to maintain a mechanism in place to deal with, with these bad actors. So, I wouldn't want, I, I think tinkering with that in the wrong direction would create more of a problem. I just want to note that here we are again, we're having this conversation about a citywide ordinance, and we have all of the same players coming to the podium to talk to us. There seems to be a very specific dispute between homeowners and a particular business right in one spot, and otherwise, the rest of the city is fairly silent about this. So I think for the most part, these things are kind of taking care of themselves. Again, I'd like, I'd like a little more, bit more data to see what happens when this, when this goes into enforcement. I also want to mention, for those who didn't hear me comment on this last week, we had an issue come forward where the community that supports the Humane Society over by Fourth Street and Butler was anticipating problems with the noise that they make and the new houses that are going up in, in that forest that's becoming a neighborhood. And it dawned on me that these are the kinds of unintended consequences that two onerous nuisance ordinance could have, that we're just not thinking about ahead of time. The Humane Society could end up in tight knots with the, their ability to continue to operate their shelter, even though they've been in place for decades, because new residents have come into the area not understanding the, the noise, the, the radius of noise level they're getting into. One thing I do want to stay away from, and this is just my opinion, I really don't think we need to get into using specific decibel levels on this. I think it needs to remain rather subjective. There's There's just too many variables involved here in terms of types of decibels, in terms of distance and the logarithmic relationship between distance and noise volume. There's different kinds of noise that have a decibel level that we're all okay with or that we live with, such as train noise. And so, these considerations just become a quagmire, and I'd like to stay away from that, leave things more subjective. And that's kind of what I'm thinking at this point. I hope that's enough direction for you for now.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Great comments, Councilmember Aslan. I do believe that the hours need to be looked at down the road, and, you know, I have done a lot of research, I stated this at our last meeting when we talked about this, that what I find that has been successful is looking at decibel levels, and I know it's not a road that's easy. We do have information from the consultant that we can maybe reference back to, if that is the appetite of council. I personally don't see a way around looking at that, but I, you know, I look forward to seeing what comes back to us. And I don't know if I want to wait a year. I understand getting some information for the next few months to see if we leave the language the way it is, getting some information on that, but a year seems to be a long time from now. So, those are my comments. Thanks.
Councilmember House?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the thing that I really want to keep voicing in this is, and I stated it earlier, but want to just kind of wrap up my thoughts on this and my conversation on this, is that question again of where these things often tend to happen and why it's acceptable. Councilmember Matthews brought up correctly the history of the South Side, in the establishment of that neighborhood, in many policies and principles in our history that were steeped in segregation. One of the things that, and I would highly recommend a book for people to read, is called The Color of Law. I can never remember the author's name, but it talks about the history of segregation in neighborhoods in our nation, and how so many of the zoning codes, rules, and regulations that established this country were steeped in prejudicial and segregation-based policies that have perpetuated throughout time, the neglect and the overlooking and the ignoring of the needs and frankly, in many cases, the humanity of communities of color and communities that are steeped in poverty. And those are things that need to be considered even as we're talking about something that seems as challenging or difficult as a nuisance party ordinance, a noise ordinance, all of these things. These are policies that have historically been used to not consider those groups. And so, I stand on the side of continuing to want to bring this forward. Thank you, City Manager Clifton. The author of The Color of Law is Richard Rothstein. And it is amazing to read through that and consider the impact to communities when policies do not take into account what I always refer to as the least of these, whatever that looks like in our community. And so, as we're considering this, I would challenge members of council to not only look at the implications for our own neighborhoods, wherever we happen to be fortunate enough to live, but also to consider that conversation around the least of those in our community, and how they are not only impacted now, but have historically been impacted by policies like this when they are not taken into full consideration. Thank you.
All right. So, I actually didn't write down who, I did not hear any call for changing any element of these policies, correct?
Mayor, that's what we hear.
And I support not changing any policies in here. I would like to give it some time to work, and then if a conversation is needed about elements of this, we can, we can have it, but I would like to give it some time to collect some data and to collect and make sure how it's working.
Yeah, and thank you. And if I may, Mayor, and going back to Councilmember Aslan's comments and the comments of others, this is not the discussion of, you know, when we talked about returning to a broader policy discussion with perhaps other options in mind versus what has been proposed to council over the years. This is more of an interim discussion of, well, what do we do now, and until such time as that policy discussion returns. We hear the comments of the Vice Mayor as well, that a year may be too long, and I want to give assurance, I don't, I don't think we're talking that timeframe. I think in the back of our minds, we were thinking it would be, you know, several months, and that's now stemming back to the last discussion, I guess in December or whenever it was, late fall. But we're not ready yet, but we have gotten good input on this. We hear council's desire to leave the policy as it stands, maybe take some time, as you mentioned, to see how it works, collect the data at some point, not waiting a year, but at some point, we will return to the dais with some broader policy discussions on this topic.
Councilmember Spence?
Thank you, City Manager. Your discussion, I think, is ignoring the elephant in the room, because we have ordinance, a pair of them. We have an ordinance on the book, have two ordinances on the book, and we have, for the last several months, not been enforcing our own ordinance. So, I suggest that going forward, if we have an ordinance, that we enforce it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, and to be clear, that's what we're hearing as well. So, yeah, thank you for your clarifying comment, and that's what we understand.
Councilmember Aslan would like me to state that in the chat, he said he has no specific allegiance to a particular timeframe. All right.
Mayor, if I may, and just to follow up on what the city manager has said, just for clarification, because there was a case cited here that went to the magistrate court where a ruling came down that was, I'll just put it this way, surprising to myself and those in my office. Moving forward with the discussion tonight, these, as you have indicated, Councilmember Spence, the party, nuisance party ordinance has been on the book for 10 years, and it's always been enforceable and will continue to be, and, you know, gathering data on the enforcement of that specific ordinance, as well as the noise ordinance as written, you know, we'll be paying attention to that in my office as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Open call to the public. I don't believe we have any. All right. Moving down to informational items, two from Mayor, Council, and City Manager, and future agenda item requests, and I will start with Councilmember Spence.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing to report from the two commissions that I serve as liaison to open space and transportation. I would like to return to my last, last week, I made a request for a future agenda item, not knowing that the statement of council goals from 2017, which were still posted in our foyer, not knowing that priority-based budgeting establishes seven large goals for not only the council but for city government, and I would like to re, what's the proper term?
Withdraw.
Rescind?
Withdraw, correct.
Negate my request for a future agenda item. The statement of the seven priorities for priority-based budgeting meets every expectation that I have, and I'm glad to see that we have it prominently displayed on the wall of our council chambers. So, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Nothing for me tonight. I will just say, fly Eagles, fly. Congratulations to my Philadelphia Eagles for winning the Super Bowl.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So, one of my favorite events is coming up. It's the iHeart Pluto Night at the Orpheum Theater, and this year, they're featuring Dr. Ellen Stern. And there's also the unveiling of the Beer Chosen Astronomy on Tap. It'll be at Mother Road, 6:00 PM this Thursday. And if you haven't joined the iHeart Pluto Festival, there's a lot of different events going on, and it's, it's just a great time, so I hope to see you all there.
Councilmember Aslan?
Congratulations to your Eagles, Councilmember House. I have nothing else to add.
Councilmember Garcia?
I had the honor of introducing myself and welcoming our newest and largest public class of our Citizen Police Academy this past Wednesday. As a graduate of the program myself, I spoke to the class about public engagement and the maturation of the PD through my eyes over the past 20 years, and all of the good community policing initiatives that they have taken on. This brief talk included how members of the public can become more acquainted with city boards and commissions, and it was nice to see so much engagement at that, at that meeting. Coming up this week, we have Sunnyside Neighborhood Association meeting on, or I will be attending the Sunnyside Neighborhood Association meeting this Thursday at 6:00. And they always welcome members of the public to join them as well, to talk about all things Sunnyside, excuse me. I did have, I don't know if this is necessarily a fair, but while I was watching a planning and zoning meeting from a month or two back online, I saw that the Planning and Zoning Committee was interested in having a council liaison. There might be reasons why we don't do that, that I don't know about, but if the opportunity presents itself, I would love to take on that opportunity, just because I like watching commission meetings for fun. Now, on the fair side of things, and I didn't write this one out so much, it just kind of came to me in the moment during the meeting, or I've been thinking about it, but I didn't write it out complete. Still going to have to perfect that over time. But the fair that I want to recommend is the conversation around the uranium haul route of the Pinion Pine Mining Company, and the public safety ramifications around that, surrounding this transportation through our community. Really, what I'm wanting to see is what effects it has on flagstaff-specific, and maybe some plans that we have in case there is an issue with spilling of that product on our roads, since I believe, it's my belief, that the haul route would go through our city at some point. And then also, you know, whatever, whatever other things we have around that.
And maybe it's time to have the hazardous waste presentation from FIRE again? I don't know. I throw that out there. We had a great presentation from them, maybe a year ago, talking about these types of issues, any kind of potential spill or whatever, and I found it really comforting, and it was just good to know how well-trained fire personnel are.
That's exactly what I was looking for, Mayor. It doesn't necessarily even have to be framed around that particular topic, but since it is something I think the community should be informed about, since it is happening as of tomorrow, I believe, from what I understand.
Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended a virtual meeting hosted by our very own Erin Young from the Water Reuse Association, and the topic was just a sneak preview into how Tucson, Phoenix, and Scottsdale are planning for advanced water purification. It was very informative and interesting. I still can't get to using wastewater as drinking water, but they were very impressive on their processes. Also, this is not a fair item, but I'd like to ask to have some discussions come to the dais in a public discussion on our indigenous cultural community property. Recently, there was an RSOQ sent out, but I kind of feel like it was the cart before the horse, because we have no idea, at least I don't have an idea, what it will really cost and take to rehab that building so that a organization can come in and occupy it and make it their own. So, I've spoke to the city manager about this. I'm not sure how to move it forward. I know Amy's out this week, but if we could just start getting that information on how we can initiate, maybe hiring a firm to do the assessment or appraisal or something, but until that question is answered, you know, I don't know really how we move forward. Is it a million? Is it 10 million before we can even release it to another organization to occupy? And I think we really need to get that figured out sooner than later. So, I just wanted to make that statement publicly.
Thank you. I am having a home wildfire assessment done by Mark Adams with our Wildland Fire Department or Wildland Fire Crew, and I've invited all of my neighbors to come so that they can see me publicly shamed about things that I need to do in my own yard to make my home, do some home hardening and whatnot. And if the public is interested in having these, Mark conducts these for free, and his phone number is 928-213-2510, and again, his name is Mark Adams, and he's the Wildland Community Risk Reduction Specialist. I just got back from my first class of the Mayor's Institute on City Design as part of my Just City mayoral fellowship, and we have a series of classes that will be going on for the next couple of months. And Sarah Dar, the Director of the Housing Section, was able to join online for all of the workshops and discussions that we had, and I'm, I'm so looking forward to this, and I will be making the readings that we're doing available to anyone who would like to take a look at them. On this weekend, there is With Love Flagstaff for two days at the Visitor Center, so it's on the 15th and the 16th from 11:00 to 4:00. There's ice sculptures and various activities going on there, so downtown is definitely the place to be. Also on Saturday is a fix-it clinic from 10:00 to 2:00, and for those who don't know what that is, this is something that the Sustainability Division puts on, and it's wonderful. You can take anything that you have in your house that's broken and take it there, and there is probably a volunteer who can help you fix it, and that includes bikes most of the time. You have to make an appointment, though, so look for that on the city website. And that is all I have. City Manager?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
All right. We're adjourned.